Welcome to you all to the Monday, October 19th meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted this evening to be joined with some of our boards and commission members from the Planning Commission, from the Economic Development Authority, from the Housing Commission, and also Human Services Advisory Council. So we're really happy that you all are able to join us tonight. We look forward to a very fruitful discussion. But before we get started, I think the clerk has something she'd like to say to us, and I'll let her go ahead and do that.
Thank you. The meeting for which this agenda has been posted and is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Housing Commission, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency, all participating members of council and the other boards will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and members of the public can view the meeting on the city's website at www.fallschurchva.com/councilmeetings and on FCC TV, that is Cox Channel 11, RCFN Channel 2, and Verizon Channel 35. City council work sessions are conducted to allow council members to discuss upcoming legislation and policy issues, and the public is not generally invited to speak. Public comments may be sent to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. All comments are provided in full to the members of the city council and will be summarized at the next city council meeting. And would you like me to do a roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I would, please.
Okay, let's start with the city council. Vice Mayor Conley.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes, here.
Ms. Hardy.
Here.
If everybody can mute, but the person who's got to help be helpful, I think that might be the problem. So Ms. Hardy, where you are here.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lickenhouse.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
And Mayor Carter.
Here.
And then I'm going to call the role for the Planning Commission. Ms. Firestone White.
Here.
Mr. Krasner. I think he said he wasn't going to be here this evening. Mr. Puente.
Here.
Mr. Rankin. Oh, was that Mr. Rankin? No. Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Teep.
Here.
And Mr. Woodisca. And he may be absent as well.
Hey, so I just let in Brent Krasner, so he might be around now for.
Oh. Mr. Krasner, are you here?
I'm here.
I'm just calling the role for the Planning Commission.
Okay, sorry, I'm never too late.
No problem, thank you. So for the Economic Development Authority. If everybody can mute, again, that would be helpful. Ah, okay, I think we've got it. Mr. Coyle.
This might be a long meeting.
I don't think Mr. Coyle is here. Ms. Messner.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Williams. And Mr. Young. I see he's here.
Here.
Okay. And Housing Commission, Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
I think Davis is here, I think I saw him.
Oh, okay. Maybe, let's see if he's able to. Hmm. Mr. Davis, are you able to unmute? I see that you've indicated in the chat button that you're here, so we're unable to hear you, so I'm not sure. Maybe you can get that working if you want to participate later. Oh, you're working on your microphone, thank you for the message. So, Mr. Shakur.
Present.
Thank you. And Mr. Hicks.
I'm here.
Okay, and for Human Services Advisory Council, Mr. Cheney.
Here.
Ms. Mox.
Here.
Ms. Norloff. She may not be here. Ms. Roth. Oh, her. She's here, I saw her.
I'm here, sorry.
That's okay, no problem, thank you. And Ms. Newman.
Here.
Thank you, and I think we may have a few student reps here as well. I think Ms. Joseph Dakin's here.
Hello, I'm here.
Hi, I think you might be the only student rep here.
No, there's another one, Mr. ZIE.
Here.
Oh, I see you, thank you. Okay, I think that's everybody.
I think our Housing Commission liaisons are here, too.
Oh, do you like.
Jesse?
Maybe not.
All right, well, why don't we go ahead and get started? It looks like this could be a long evening with our technical situation here, so it looks like we got a full house, and we're most appreciative that so many folks are able to take time this evening to spend with us on this important issue. But why don't we go ahead and get started? We do have a long agenda tonight. Ms. Lewis, are you going to be handling the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to go ahead and get started? Thank you for coming out.
Yes, so in its background, in 2018, Housing Staff, we completed, we convened a work group and developed the affordable housing, I mean, the Affordable Living Policy to meet the need for the lack of affordable housing in the city. And then in 2019, we completed the Housing of Complete Community Chapter in the city's consolidated plan. With our utmost goal was to do everything impossible to create and preserve affordable housing for those who live and work in the city. And right now, this is even more critical as we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we are currently assisting 57 persons monthly with their rent, and this is only going to get worse in the coming months. And so, we realized that we needed to do more last year in 2019, so we applied to the Virginia Housing, and we received a capacity grant in the amount of $20,000 that allowed us to contract with a consultant to prepare a housing study that would assist us with what we were trying to do as far as providing affordable housing. And so, the city contracted with National Housing Trust and Federal City Council, and between the two of them, they have decades' worth of housing experience, and so, you know, they were the ones that were awarded the contract. So we're really excited that they have prepared several reports for us. They consist of three reports, Creating and Maintaining Affordability Memo, The Fields' Preservation Plan, and a Roadmap for Preservation. And so, Moha Takor, who is the Public Engagement and Policy Associate for National Housing Trust, is going to be conducting the presentation tonight. It's a large report with a lot of really good information, and we're really excited about their recommendations. And so, with that, I'm going to introduce Moha to begin her report, her presentation.
Great, thank you, Dana, and hi, everybody, and good evening. My name is Moha Takor, and as Dana mentioned, I am the Public Engagement and Policy Associate at the National Housing Trust. So I'm joined this evening by my colleague Laura Abernathy, the Director of State and Local Policy, and Joanna Shell, Policy Fellow. Also joining us this evening is Maura Brophy, who's the Director of Transportation and Infrastructure at Federal City Council, and Laura Miller-Brooks, the Senior Transportation and Infrastructure Associate, also at Federal City Council. Firstly, I want to thank you all for both allowing us the opportunity to present our work this evening, and also for joining us for this presentation. So, next slide, please. So as Dana just mentioned, the Falls Church Housing and Human Services Unit received a Community Impact Grant from Virginia Housing to complete a housing affordability project. And we've been working closely with Dana since March of this year, and spoke with a number of you, as well as stakeholders from around the city and the region throughout this process. And this evening, I'm pleased that we'll be presenting to you the work that we've completed for the city. So just to run through a brief agenda of our presentation, firstly, we'll briefly introduce both the National Housing Trust and Federal City Council, for those of you who are a little unfamiliar with our organizations. Then we'll outline the deliverables that were completed as part of this project, before providing a high-level walkthrough of three of the deliverables focused on the preservation of existing affordable housing and creating new opportunities for affordable housing in Falls Church. So the three deliverables that we're going to talk through, the memo, the preservation plan, and the roadmap, they all should have been shared with you last week, and also have been linked into this evening's agenda. If we have time, which I imagine we will at the end of our presentation, there'll be time for any questions from any of you. Next slide, please. So, the National Housing Trust, we're a national nonprofit organization based here in Washington, DC, committed to preserving access to affordable housing. We are a leading expert in preserving, improving, and maintaining affordable housing, ensuring that privately-owned rental housing remains affordable and sustainable. And we're pretty uniquely positioned using policy informed by practice. We have tools of real estate development, lending, policy innovation and advocacy, as well as energy solutions. And through our leadership in both affordable housing policy and practice, we've been responsible for saving more than 36,000 affordable homes in all 50 states and the District of Columbia, leveraging more than $1.2 billion in financing. On our team for this project, as I introduced earlier, I was joined by Laura Abernathy and Joanna Shell. We also relied on the guidance of our president, Priya Jayachandra, and throughout this process, and we're really glad to be able to also consult with NHT Communities, which is the real estate development arm of National Housing Trust, and we utilized their experience in acquiring and preserving affordable housing in the Northern Virginia region to better understand the context of our work. So I'll briefly pass over to Maura, so we'll introduce Federal City Council.
Thanks, Moha, and good evening, everyone. I'm Maura Brophy, I'm the Director of Transportation and Infrastructure with the Federal City Council. For those who are unfamiliar with the Federal City Council, we are a DC-based nonprofit whose mission is to advance policies and projects that are good for the future of the DC region. Housing has been a big part of our work for many years, and since 2016, we have been working to escalate awareness about the role that ADUs can play in the region's affordability housing challenge. We've been partnered with NHT to focus on the Accessory Dwelling Unit Ordinance, which we will talk more about later this evening. Very happy to be here, very happy to be presenting to you tonight, and thanks for the opportunity to be here. Next slide, please.
Great. So through this affordable, so through this housing affordability project, the city requested an update to its existing affordable housing preservation study, as well as a zoning rewrite of its accessory dwelling ordinance. So as part of the housing preservation study, we produced three documents, we'll focus our presentation on today, the memo, the preservation plan, and the roadmap. And Federal City Council, as Maura just mentioned, with their vast experience with accessory dwelling units, was leading the zoning rewrite for the city's existing accessory dwelling ordinance. And Maura will talk further about the ordinance later in the presentation, but just want to note here, as we do also in the memo itself, that the Accessory Dwelling Unit Program shares the same acronym as the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program. So we'll actually be calling the Accessory Dwelling Ordinance, the Accessory Homes Ordinance. There's a bit of confusion just in the acronyms of the programs in the city, but just wanted to clarify that at the outset. And so with that, I guess, let's dive in. So next slide, please. So the first deliverable we'll be presenting this evening is the memo that provides recommendations to city focused on creating and maintaining affordability of its housing stock. So we believe that to support the current and future affordable housing stock, the city must implement a pretty robust housing strategy that acknowledges the need for both creating new and preserving existing affordable housing. I will say, the need for such a comprehensive approach to preserving and producing affordable rental housing is not unique to the city of Falls Church. You know, as we've seen, especially now during the pandemic, there is a continued need for affordable housing across the country. And I specify this both-and approach, so new construction and preservation, acknowledging that new construction alone, you know, may not increase the net number of housing units in the city. But instead, by preserving the existing affordable rental units as well, the city can maintain its current stock and ensure that any new construction of affordable housing can produce a net increase in the number of housing units in the city, and hopefully ease some of those housing pressures that residents in both old and current and new, you know, are facing. So to provide a strategy that addresses the challenges of creating and maintaining affordable rental housing, we developed a set of recommendations that highlight opportunities for increasing affordable housing activity that will aid in the diversity and affordability of housing stock. So the goal of this is to support the current and future affordable housing stock, and all of these recommendations are based on best practices that we've seen in the Northern Virginia region, as well as various jurisdictions from around the country. The best practices, the details of those, they're all located in the memo that you can look in your own time. And I'll note here, as I did a few minutes earlier, that we'll be providing a high-level summary of each of these recommendations in the report. So we have sort of presented these recommendations in four categories. So the first set of recommendations that we'll walk through acknowledges that communities that are proactively investing in affordable housing are doing so by explicitly directing financial resources to these activities. In these recommendations, we identify some immediate sources of capital that can be directed towards affordable housing, as well as acknowledging that there is going to be a need, and there is a need, for sort of longer-term sustainable capital resources as well. The second set of recommendation really builds upon the existing proven policies that are already there in the city. When we examined many of the neighboring jurisdictions, especially in Northern Virginia, you know, many of those jurisdictions face similar preservation challenges to that of Falls Church, and it became clear.
I think we're losing you.
Sorry, can you hear me?
We can now, yes.
Okay. So obviously, understanding that no two communities are the same, you know, we've sort of provided a guide and some context for how the city can consider strengthening these policies and programs. The third set of recommendations recognizes the need for a community-wide commitment to affordable housing. Communities that have successful affordable housing strategies, what we've seen, sort of have made this an explicit priority. And these recommendations outline tangible steps for Falls Church to increase capacity, community engagement, and create what we like to call an institutionalized commitment to affordable housing across various levels of the government as well. And finally, the last set of recommendations acknowledges that the adoption of the updated Accessory Homes zoning ordinance is a really important step, but that alone will not mobilize the market for accessory home development in the city. You know, it's ultimately the decision of homeowners if they want to construct an accessory home, but, you know, following some recommendations, local officials, advocates, and industry stakeholders can all play a really important role in creating an environment that encourages this production as well. So I'll now pass it on to my colleague Laura, who'll speak a little bit more about the first category of recommendations.
Great, thank you, Moha, and hi, everyone. So as Moha said, our first category of recommendations centers around financial resources for affordable housing. And what I don't think will be news to anyone on this call is that to meaningfully either produce or create affordable housing, there has to be adequate resources available to actually undertake those activities. And so, also as Moha said, we are going to move fairly quickly through these recommendations, but the details behind all of them, as well as the best practices that are informing each of them, are in the report. So I encourage everyone to take a look at those details, because we aren't going to spend a whole lot of time on each of them here tonight. So our first recommendation is to dedicate annual funding to the Affordable Housing Fund. I should step back here to acknowledge that the National Housing Trust works with communities and cities of various sizes across the country who come to us with a similar question, say, we need to, you know, produce and preserve more affordable housing, and we want your help to figure out how to do that. And oftentimes, we find that we're recommending and helping them set up a fund specifically dedicated to affordable housing. And so it's worth acknowledging here that you all are ahead of the curve in that, in that you already have the Affordable Housing Fund, that you have a fund that is exclusively dedicated towards preserving and creating affordable housing and serving those that are earning below 120%, excuse me, 120% of the area meaning income there in Falls Church. So that's a great first step. Unfortunately, the Affordable Housing Fund hasn't historically had enough funds in it to attract the developers needed to do the type of work that is required to either maintain existing housing or create new housing. I think the FY21 budget, or proposed budget, I should say, indicates just over $300,000 available in the Affordable Housing Fund, and over the last 10 years, there hasn't been a single external request for this funding, and what we heard through our engagement is that it's because that dollar amount is so low, it's not worth the effort of going through the application process. So we do recommend dedicated annual funding into that fund, and every year, Housing and Human Services makes a request to council for a specific dollar amount, and we would encourage funding at that level, which is based on the actual needs. And again, further details about what that actually looks like are in the report. I do recognize that it's really easy for me to sit here and say, oh, well, you should, you know, allocate funds through this existing fund, and it's much harder to actually implement. So our, the next three recommendations are about potential sources for long-term dedicated funding to allocate dollars to the fund. So the recommendation number two of the report is to dedicate tax revenue to the Affordable Housing Fund exclusively. And I should recognize here that we are not recommending this as an immediate action item. The economic challenges and financial hardships that have come along with the global pandemic mean that now probably isn't the appropriate time to be increasing taxes on the residents of Falls Church or anywhere else, really. But in our research around, you know, this topic, we recognize that a lot of your peer jurisdictions in the Northern Virginia area do have tax revenue that is specifically earmarked for affordable housing and goes directly into their equivalent of the Affordable Housing Fund. So the first example is the meals tax. So the city already has an existing meals tax, and the revenue from that goes to the general fund, and what we would recommend is an increase of 1%, with that increased revenue going specifically to the Affordable Housing Fund. And it's estimated that over the course of one year, that would generate $800,000 for the Affordable Housing Fund, which would be a huge increase over the existing $300,000. And then the second type of tax, excuse me, is the real estate tax. And similarly, we would just recommend a small increase in the existing real estate tax, which would generate significant funds for the Affordable Housing Fund. Recommendation number three is to direct all cashing lieu collected through the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program to the Affordable Housing Fund. I won't spend a lot of time on this either, but you heard earlier this year from a different consultant who was hired to create a methodology for collecting cashing lieu for developers who choose not to create affordable dwelling units as part of the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program, but instead pay a dollar equivalent to the city. And so you'll hear later that we encourage you all to officially adopt that methodology, and furthermore, we would, you know, strongly recommend not only adopting that, but very specifically directing all of that cashing lieu that is to be collected to go directly into the Affordable Housing Fund. And then lastly, is to utilize the Amazon Reach Funds to increase affordability. So this recommendation is slightly different than the previous two that you've heard, or three, I should say, that you've heard, because rather than thinking about how to increase funding for the Affordable Housing Fund, this recommendation is about accessing additional financial resources that are available through Virginia Housing and targeting specific affordable housing units in the city. So as a result of Amazon announcing that they'd be locating HQ2 in National Landing there in Northern Virginia, Virginia Housing has made a pool of resources available to jurisdictions in the region that will be likely affected by this influx of people and capital and just a changing environment. And Falls Church, very fortunately, has the opportunity to access that funding in FY21. And the application process is such that the money can go directly to a specific property, either to create new units or preserve existing units, but, and though Virginia Housing will be the one to determine that financing, they will take the recommendation of the jurisdiction in which the unit is located. So what we recommend here is that you all in the city reach out to existing owners of affordable units in the city, and our report identifies, I think it's just over 1,300 units that meet the criteria identified by Virginia Housing, and we would encourage you all to reach out to those owners to get a sense of their needs, what it is that they would need in terms of financial resources to prolong the affordability on their units, and then work with them such that they can access the funding that is available through Virginia Housing. And that application process unfortunately is only open through the end of this year, so December 31st, 2020, so this is fairly immediate action that would be needed. But again, the report goes on to outline the 1,300-plus units that are eligible in Falls Church for this funding, and it would just require some engagement on your end to sort of get them across that final hurdle to access that funding. And with that, I'll turn over to my colleague, Moha, to discuss some of the policy and programmatic recommendations to further advance the creation and preservation of affordable housing in the city.
Thanks, Laura. So as I mentioned earlier, the second set of recommendations is focused on how Falls Church can really build upon the existing policies and programs to enhance and expand its ability to preserve and produce affordable housing. So in this section, we've sort of looked again to the neighboring Northern Virginia region to identify sort of strategic and innovative tools that are helping to foster an environment that supports, you know, the development and preservation of affordable housing. So we've sort of identified, you know, some important aspects of each program or policy that then allows us to tailor them to the specific context or needs of Falls Church, and recommend sort of specific updates that the city can potentially adopt to further the work that, you know, much of it is already doing. So the first recommendation is focused on strengthening the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program. So I will just start out by saying, I apologize if I get into a bit of the weeds of this recommendation, so I just wanted to, you know, give you that fair warning. So the current ADU program, it allows for developers to negotiate with the city to garner density bonuses in new housing projects in exchange for ensuring that a certain number of units will remain at a rental price below market for a determined length of time. However, in its current iteration, the program is entirely optional, and the addition of any affordable units is a voluntary concession. I'll add also, as Laura mentioned earlier, that the city has not yet officially implemented any formal procedures or conditions to allow for developers to provide a cash-in-lieu of constructing ADUs, as is advised by the program guidelines. And so we can see that there are some opportunities for strengthening both of these components of the city's existing ADU program. So, again, as Laura mentioned, earlier this year, the city contracted with another consultant to sort of figure out what a potential process could look like, and amount could look like, by giving developers a cash-in-lieu option as part of the ADU program. And that essentially ensures that even if developers... as is advised by the program guidelines. And so we can see that there are some opportunities for strengthening both of these components of the city's existing ADU program. So again, as Laura mentioned earlier this year, the city contracted with another consultant to sort of figure out what a potential process could look like, and amount could look like, by giving developers a cash-in-lieu option as part of the ADU program. And that essentially ensures that even if developers, you know, find it infeasible to construct ADUs or affordable units, they're able to provide cash as a contribution. They can still help to meet the city's affordable housing needs. So we believe the first, you know, important step is to implement this cash-in-lieu program formally. And once this is in place, we can really expand the participants of the ADU program. And the city can do that by employing a minimum threshold of eligibility, which we talk a bit more in detail in the memo about what that is. But that would essentially require participation into the program. So these two elements, so the cash-in-lieu option and then sort of a minimum threshold of eligibility, are both elements that are consistent with practices in neighboring Northern Virginia jurisdictions. So by establishing this minimum threshold, what we want to do and what we hope to do is sort of create an ADU program that's voluntary mandatory. So it's voluntary in that the strengthened program will still continue to apply to any site that's the subject of a rezoning or a special exception or a site plan. So totally voluntary. It's also any development that will also meet a threshold defined by the city. Again, totally voluntary. But if they meet that threshold and also, you know, apply for a rezoning, then they would be required to provide a number of ADUs or make a cash contribution to the, through the ADU program. So should the developer choose to provide units, the city will in return offer additional density or increased height. And regardless of whether or not the developer chooses to accept the additional density or height, they must at this point comply with the ADU ordinance. So again, while this may sound like a mandatory program, the developers, in fact, can choose whether they participate in the program by going through the developmental approval process and by meeting that minimum threshold that the city will define before they're actually required to provide any affordable units or cash. And again, I'll state, you know, have a look in the memo. It's all laid out there, much clearer than probably I can explain in a couple of minutes about the different sort of aspects of that program and how the city can really strengthen it. The next recommendation is extending the affordability of existing affordable dwelling units. So I just spoke about, you know, strengthening new affordable dwelling unit resources in the city. But, you know, we think it's equally important for the city to also focus resources on preserving existing affordable dwelling units, of which there are about fifty-four rental units in the city. So in our engagement, we were advised that all new affordable dwelling units that are placed into service are to be negotiated to be affordable into perpetuity. But it's these current ADUs that have a limited affordability term. These existing covenants cannot be extended past the initial twenty-year affordability period. And additionally, unless the current owners decide to, you know, sell any ADUs, their affordability resale control price will also expire. However, we see an opportunity for the city to be able to negotiate additional affordability of these ADUs separate to the existing covenants. And these could go into effect immediately after the current covenants expire. So by taking some proactive action, you know, the city can offer a financial incentive to current ADU owners in exchange for the affordability of these existing units past their current period. You know, as time passes, their property will naturally deteriorate in quality. And, you know, we feel the city could potentially offer a developer or an owner access to financial assistance to improve the quality of housing through certain upgrades or renovations. And by providing that financial assistance in lieu can, you know, expect some affordability of these existing units for a set number of years. You know, obviously, the current ADUs have a, you know, have varied expiration dates. So it could be that, you know, three or four ADUs are negotiated to extend their covenants because they're ending, you know, in the next five years. But it could be another ten in twenty years. So I think it gives the city the opportunity to negotiate as those existing units come up for expiration to really think about negotiating with the developers and owners as to how they can extend that affordability of these current units. And so the final recommendation in this section is focused on the process by which the city allocates funding through the Affordable Housing Fund. So as Laura mentioned in the first four recommendations, we're sort of providing strategies for how the city can ensure that the fund has adequate resources so it can attract applicants from developers and owners that are seeking to preserve and create affordable housing. However, these increased resources also then necessitate an objective and transparent process for allocating funds. From what we found, the current process for allocating funds is largely subjective and lacks the transparency that a developer might desire when creating a capital stack necessary to support a project. You know, there are lots of different steps. There are various points at which the city works with a developer. There are, you know, a few different commissions and councils that it has to go through before a developer can finally get approval for any use of funding. And so while the current process might have been sufficient for the Affordable Housing Fund to date, we believe that as a city, you know, considers the future and adopts policies and practices to increase the size of the fund and really wants to attract applicants, it's important to design a system for scoring applications and awarding funds. Most often, we find that funding awards that are made by cities and counties often involve awarding, you know, a set number of points for specific criteria. And this could also be for Falls Church, an opportunity to also reinforce the city's priorities around affordable housing, including preservation or, you know, specific environmental sustainability standards. And this could also then increase the transparency of the application and review process. So I'm now going to pass it on to Joanna, who'll talk a little bit about capacity building in the city.
Thanks, Moha. So in the preceding recommendations, we highlighted specific policies and programs, as well as financing strategies that can be implemented and strengthened to pursue the affordable housing goals of the city. But the city will still need to commit from the pub, from, need commitment from the public and city council to support these recommendations, since those are the parties who have the power to approve or deny new policies and budgetary allocations. In recommendation eight, we advise that city staff continue to engage and educate the public and council to garner genuine buy-in and a community-wide commitment to affordable housing. One strategy we've identified for contextualizing the need for affordable housing is literally putting a face to the issue through a campaign that highlights Falls Church residents already living in affordable housings and those who could benefit from affordable housing opportunities. In several of our stakeholder interviews, the quality of the city's schools was reported as a major value for residents. Highlighting teachers and school staff and how the availability of affordable housing could allow them to live where they work is a potential way to help the broader Falls Church community see and understand the tangible benefits of affordable housing for their community. Recommendation nine hinges on the upcoming cooperative agreement between Falls Church and Fairfax County, which will go into effect in 2021. This agreement allows Falls Church to access CBVG and home funds through the Fairfax, through Fairfax County, which the city is currently accessing through Arlington County. But it also represents other affordable housing opportunities for Falls Church, such as the Department of Housing and Community Development's NOFA for nonprofits and the Housing Rehabilitation and Down Payment Assistance Programs. So this upcoming agreement represents an opportunity for Falls Church that should be further explored. One way to do so is through forming a coalition with Fairfax City, Herndon, Clifton, and Vienna, who all have similar agreements with Fairfax County, to create a peer learning environment to exchange ideas, experiences, opportunities, and challenges of the cooperative agreement with Fairfax County, as well as more broadly, to learn from each other about avenues for creating and preserving affordable housing as small independent jurisdictions. Additionally, Fairfax County recently formed an Affordable Housing Preservation Task Force, which had its first meeting on October first and will continue to convene until mid-February. This task force is focused on strategies to preserve both market-affordable and committed rental homes within the county. All these meetings are virtual and open to the public, and video recordings of the meetings are made available. So the city should monitor these meetings, as well as the findings and recommendations of the task force, since Falls Church faces many of the same issues as the jurisdictions within Fairfax County. And the results of the task force could be useful to Falls Church. So now I'll pass it along to my colleague Maura Brophy to talk about the accessory home zoning ordinance.
Thanks, Joanna. As we mentioned earlier on, part of the deliverables for this project was the preparation of a rewrite to the city's zoning ordinance that would allow for the buy-right development of accessory homes in the city. I'm not going to go into detail about the policy proposals in the ordinance, but what I do want to do is draw connections between accessory homes and the housing affordability strategy that we are presenting tonight. So accessory homes, as we mentioned at the outset, can have a meaningful impact on housing affordability due to the fact that they can increase housing supply, especially in developed and land-restricted areas. So we think that they could make a lot of sense in Falls Church from a housing affordability standpoint. And the ordinance is certainly one important step that would allow for increased levels of production in the city. But the important thing to note is that the zoning ordinance itself will not mobilize a market for accessory homes and will not in itself guarantee higher levels of production. In addition to that, it's important to note that the general production of accessory homes, while it might lead to increased housing supply, which can bring down the cost of housing, absent additional interventions or incentives, the accessory homes themselves will not be income-restricted or dedicated affordable. So the memo goes into detail on more strategies that the city can employ to further kind of escalate the awareness of accessory homes as a benefit to homeowners and also to put the right incentives in place so that the city can see the levels of supply that it would like to see and see the benefits related to housing affordability. So I'll go, I'll touch on a couple of the recommendations that are outlined. But ultimately, homeowners will make the decision about whether to build these units. So the recommendations are really rooted in strategies that can make the process easy for homeowners. And one part of that is really working with industry stakeholders and advocates to develop the right processes through which the units can be planned and permitted, and also to bring a level of awareness to homeowners about the benefits that ADUs present. The homeowner will see benefits related to bringing down the cost of housing by creating rental income on the property, by being able to form multi-generational households. Many benefits that the homeowner stands to see can be, the advocates can really help them to understand. And then the industry stakeholders see, are motivated around this issue because they see a business opportunity. And so they, we've seen them be really helpful partners in helping the city and homeowners navigate the planning, permitting, and approval process. And they've been a really strong stakeholder group that's been helping the city, or different cities in the region, advance the development of accessory homes. So the memo goes into further detail on both of these. Again, the memo also outlines strategies and incentives that the city can use to encourage the units to be designated as affordable. So more to come in the memo, but those are the important things to note. And Moha, with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you. So we're now going to shift gears slightly. So again, I would ask you to, you know, hold on to your questions about the memo and our recommendations. Until then, we can answer all of your questions. So the second deliverable we focused on is the Fields Preservation Plan. So as many of you probably already know, the Fields is a ninety-six-unit committed affordable housing property here in the city. And it's been made affordable through the low-income housing tax credits. And the tax credits are expected to expire in 2026. And so the city tasked us to, you know, do some research, speak to the owners, and consider some possible preservation strategies that they could implement to ensure that the ninety-six units were maintained as affordable long-term. So one more thing to note. So under Virginia Housing's Extended Use Agreement, also related to the contract with this property, the units will actually remain affordable for a full three years after the housing credits expire in 2029. So I think that's an important consideration. And, you know, I think as we mentioned earlier, like, I think it's really important and valuable that the city has sort of flagged this property so far out before both the housing credits expire, as well as the rental prices increase, that, you know, there's enough time that the city can consider all these different strategies and sort of do that legwork before, you know, it's crunch time in a way. So throughout this process of sort of creating this preservation plan, we consulted with city staff, as well as engaging with the current nonprofit and for-profit owners of the Fields, sort of understanding their long-term intentions, as well as their capacity and ability to preserve this property as an affordable multi-rental family, uh, family home for long-term. And so with this in mind, we've provided some valuable context within the preservation plan and have presented sort of a potential preservation strategy for the city to undertake in order to protect both the property's affordability long-term, but also consider the residents who live there that could potentially be displaced if this affordability is lost. So our strategy outlines some very specific next steps that the city can take. Again, in the interest of time, I'm going to mention a few high-level takeaways from our research and stakeholder engagement, as well as some key points in the preservation strategy. So firstly, the Fields is owned by, is jointly owned by Wesley Housing, Kettler, and Sun America. And so Sun America, we discovered, sort of has the, you know, the decision-making or controlling rights of whether to hold or sell the property. Kettler and Wesley, as the, as the other owners, together do have a right of first refusal. And this means that if Sun America were to sell the property, Kettler and Wesley would have the right to jointly submit an offer to match that market price offer made by an external party. If they're able to match this market price, Kettle and Wesley would be given priority over any external buyer and would be able to purchase this property. Again, given sort of the potential market value of this property, it would be assumed this would be a pretty high price. Furthermore, it seems pretty clear from our engagement with the owners that none of the parties are interested in selling the property right now. We heard from Wesley that they had made several purchase offers to Kettler and Sun America to buy the property, and none of them were accepted. Also, when we spoke with Kettler, they advised that they don't really consider the post-housing credit options or life of a property until about two to three years before their expiration. So meaning that in this instance with the Fields, Kettler probably wouldn't be engaging in any sort of formal discussions about the Fields until early 2024 at the earliest. So it's sort of clear from here that there are no immediate actions the city can take to transfer ownership of the property to a party that might be more immediately concerned with the long-term preservation of the property. Though it still means that the city can use these intervening years to fully understand what options and incentives the city can leverage to preserve the affordability of the property. And by doing so, the city can be, you know, best positioned to engage in negotiations with the owners, you know, at the appropriate time. So next slide, please. So if there's no intention to sell the property, we sort of then assumed that the partnership has some long-term intention to redevelop the property to maximize its value. That seems sort of like the best bet of what the next steps might look like. So this presents the city with an opportunity to sort of define and understand the city's options to provide land use incentives in exchange for the long-term affordability of these ninety-six units. Though first, we note, the city must first understand the site's redevelopment potential, both by right and through a special use permit. So when we had a look at the city's internal studies that were provided to us, you know, a few of them used some differing language to define what is permissible by right and through a special use permit, as well as what the future potential of a site might be. So I think a first immediate step would be sort of to clarify this language and ensure that it's consistent across all internal documentation. So that, you know, any interpretation is going to be consistent regardless of who's looking at that document. Sort of related to that, you know, we heard from a number of stakeholders that one of the current permitted by right uses would be townhouses. However, from our discussions with the local land use attorney, we sort of determined that according to the current zoning, the by-right development of the site doesn't actually include townhouses. And this is because the city currently has a very specific zoning district that is for residential townhouses. And with the inclusion of this explicit zoning district in the zoning code, it would seem unlikely that such a development would be possible by right in another zoning district without, you know, its explicit mention in the zoning code. So, so once the city sort of has a clear understanding of the development opportunities, it'll be, it'll be better, it'll be better positioned to begin considering what it can really offer the owner in exchange for affordability. And I think we make clear in the preservation plan as well, but it's important to realize that any owner of this site, whether it be the current owners or any new owners, will most likely try to maximize profits once any affordability restrictions expire, you know, recognizing the value of the land. It's some pretty prime location in Falls Church, which also totally makes sense why the city wants to preserve its affordability. That's a really valuable location for residents to be in. So one very straightforward way that, you know, many owners and developers consider to increase the value of land is to increase the density or height of the existing site. And that increases residential units on-site. However, really crucially, the current site doesn't actually allow for the increase in density or height of the property. in density or height of the property without the explicit approval of the city. So it's sort of here that we recommend an amendment to the conditional uses permitted in the zoning code. So such an amendment would clarify that the use of a special use permit that would allow for a developer to increase height and thus density of a parcel would only be approved on the condition that the existing number of affordable units are preserved at no net loss. So for the Fields, that would mean that the city would allow a developer to increase the height limit of the redeveloped site and increase the number of units, but as long as the 96 affordable units are included in the new development. And we believe that that would be a viable strategy for the city to consider to maintain the affordability of those existing 96 units. We actually found sort of a very similar example in Arlington County, a similar provision that was implemented in 2019 in their zoning ordinance. And we make reference to that in the preservation plan as well. So in the coming years, I think once the city sort of starts to move on this and consider these different strategies and start taking these next steps, I think it's important to also, you know, engage with Virginia Housing. And as Joanna mentioned earlier, sort of this new cooperative agreement with Fairfax County and see if either, either organization, county can assess, can provide any resources or support to assist in the preservation of this property. I think also it's important for the city, even as it looks to the future preservation of the site, to not forget in these intervening years that the city should ensure that the physical structure and integrity of the buildings of the Fields are maintained. Obviously noting that this alone will not preserve the affordability of Fields long-term. You know, it's still really important to ensure that the current residents are able to live in safe and healthy homes. And so next slide, please. And so sort of related to the Fields Preservation Plan was another final deliverable that we provided as part of the Housing Affordability Study that is the Affordable Housing Preservation Roadmap. So the roadmap, I will say, was, was sort of born from sort of the process that we undertook when we were actually thinking about the preservation plan for the Fields. It's a very similar process that we ourselves undertook. But we've sort of provided this as a process for the city to follow when considering the preservation needs of individual affordable housing properties. So this includes, you know, very specific tangible steps for the city to follow when pursuing the long-term preservation of a, of a property. And so I've listed some of the broad objectives of the roadmap here. You know, they include sort of goal setting and some preliminary research. Really important is sort of outreach to property ownership and having that ongoing engagement with the property ownership. And then really considering like, what are the challenges and how the city can step up to really meet those challenges? And then to sort of consider the feasibility of these preservation strategies and then the ultimate, you know, implementation of that strategy. I will say that given the roadmap is, you know, relevant for both committed and market rate affordable housing properties, you know, the current stock of housing plus any, any future housing, as well as the various financing tools and, you know, different developer-owner agreements that may already exist on a property. We're not really going to go into too much detail here because each step in this process that we've laid out really varies depending on the target property. And also how the city came to be engaged on the preservation of the target property, whether the owner came to the city, you know, 10 years out being like, I need some help, or whether, you know, similar to the Fields, the city is the one sort of considering and really leading this process. And so I would, you know, again, you know, recommend that each of you have a look through the preservation roadmap document that's been provided to you. You know, and if you guys have any other questions, you know, obviously to let us know. And so to end, I just want to firstly thank Dana and her team for their support throughout this process. It's been, it's been a long and obviously virtual few months that we've been working on this since, since mid-March. And also we, we want to thank many of you who made the time to speak with us, sometimes multiple times. So that we were able to provide the city with recommendations and strategies that would truly be able to help the city in pursuing its goals and furthering its commitment to the preservation and production of affordable housing. And so with that, I will turn it over to Cindy and Dana, who, who can help to monitor if anyone has any questions.
All right. Well, this is Dave Tarter, the mayor. I'll, I'll take over. Let me first start by thanking you all for such a thorough and thoughtful presentation. There's so much good information in here and this is such a critical issue for our city and for the region. So we, we thank you for the great work you've done to date. I know we'll have a lot of questions. We've got a lot of folks on the line here. I think over 42 people on the line. So there's obviously great interest in the program and what you have to say. What I'm going to suggest to have an orderly conversation is maybe we electronically raise our hands so that we can sort of take turns as we speak. And it looks like we've already got multiple speakers here. Let me just go try to figure out who all the folks are. And then I'm going to just go down the line as people raise their hands. So our first speaker is Letty Hardy, our first question. We've got a number on, a following on behind that. So if you can keep your questions fairly brief, that would probably help in the conversation. Ms. Hardy?
Great. May I always go first? I'm also happy to let all of our boards and commissions have a go at this before council speaks.
Well, I don't, I would normally agree with you, but it's just hard challenging my end to try to sort out which hand is from what commission. So why don't we just sort of take them as they come? But I appreciate the sentiment.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you all. This is really comprehensive and I appreciated all the detailed recommendations. Couple of things I wanted to clarify and just make sure everyone kind of drew the same conclusion I did. On the Fields, which I think as a rallying cry in the city of the past year or so, we've been saying, we must save the Fields. What I'm hearing from your analysis is that we probably have a little more time on that. I think 2026 was that end date that we had talked about was when the affordability provisions expire. What I'm hearing you all say is that the price rent won't actually increase until 2029. And given your assessment of situation, your recommendation is not even engage until that 2024, but then a bunch of interim work that we can do internal to city staff between now and then. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. And then throughout the presentation, obviously, the big chunk of the recommendations is that all of this needs money. And I think at the end of the day, budgets really need to reflect our priorities and our values. And you gave a bunch of recommendations on kind of here sources of where you can put money into the Affordable Housing Fund, which currently is about $300,000 or less, which is much smaller than what I think we would need to do anything meaningful here. One of the questions I have is, is there a certain goal for the kind of how big the Affordable Housing Fund should be relative to the size of our population compared to what you've seen, you know, other funds do in the region?
So I will say to begin with, I can't give you a, a final dollar amount of the Affordable Housing Fund. But what I will say is that in the best practices section of that first recommendation, we do provide sort of a breakdown of per capita, sort of the investment into the Affordable Housing Fund that the neighboring jurisdictions in Northern Virginia are doing. You know, we give some examples, I think we give Arlington County, Fairfax County, and I think DC as well. And that's just sort of to give, give a sort of a reference as to the per capita investments that those jurisdictions are making into their respective affordable housing funds. So I think that if the city sort of looks to that as, as a guide, that I guess would be, I guess, a good reference point. As Laura mentioned, you know, during her, her recommendation sort of summary as well, obviously the Housing and Human Services Unit, they put in a recommendation to ask for a certain amount of funding each year to the Affordable Housing Fund. So I think having that is definitely a starting point of meeting that recommendation. I think that they're probably in the best position to understand what the specific needs of their department and of the city are than us.
Got it. I did see that. And I think when I penciled it out, it was probably equivalent to about $150,000 contribution per year, I think is what we kind of put us in the ballpark of what our neighboring localities put in. I think the hesitation you're generally going to find is that anytime you ask for money, you want to have a specific project that would go after, right? And I think throughout the presentation, what became abundantly clear, especially with the Fields potentially being lower priority, given that we have, you know, four or five years before we have to seriously engage, is really preserve the existing units. So I did read through the 50-page report with the details of, I think it's 54 rental units, 17 purchase units, and then over 1,000 market rate units that we should actually think about preserving. And with Amazon money, I think I saw from the report, it's $3.7 million that we can go after. Just doing my back-of-the-envelope math, assuming there's a difference between market rate units and say affordable rate aiming for kind of 60 to 80% AMI. If we actually could access all $3 million, that would enable us to buy down 60 units for about 10 years. And that is way more than we can produce in a year as it is. And so to me, that seems like the most immediate opportunity we should go after is what the Amazon grant applications do at the end of the year, that feels like we should put pedal to the metal and go after that free money. And then look at deploying that money against preserving the units that we actually have in town. Would you all agree that feels like the low hanging fruit in front of us?
I guess what I would say is that that is obviously a, an immediate source of capital that is readily available for the city to apply. You know, through a specific project and the city needs to work with those projects. Obviously, given the pandemic, it's not just Falls Church where a lot of city budgets are sort of under strain. I'm going to try to figure out what priorities to put resources towards. So I think that if the city decides that that's sort of this fund, this pot of money that's already available for them to apply to, I think that that could be an immediate step that the city could take and then, you know, consider, you know, next year or in the next couple of years as the economic recovery sort of slowly, sort of works its way into the budget that the city can then consider, you know, more, more funds allocated towards the Affordable Housing Fund.
Yeah, absolutely. I think in regular times, I'd be a fan of looking at things like the meals tax or how to carve money out of the general fund. But I think neither of those would actually fly currently, given how much suffering there is in the community. So I think we're very cognizant of that. It just feels like if there's $3 million in Amazon housing money, that feels like something we should definitely put resources against immediately to go after. So that's it for now. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mo, I thank you guys for that detailed presentation. I, I truly enjoyed our interview and conversation, which feels like a lifetime ago. But it was informative for me and it's good to see this come to fruition, this presentation. One question that I had, we spent some time, at least during our conversation, we've spent quite a bit of time here in the city talking about purchase of affordable housing. I know that you mentioned the accessory housing or what we call granny flats, tiny houses, they go by many names. Did you all give, you know, much thought or there additional thoughts around how we can create purchase opportunities for folks to buy in to housing here in the city? I mean, I, I think when it comes to equity and housing, one of the greatest things that we can do is to assist people in building wealth, to move out of kind of the rental cycle and look to acquire and appreciate that kind of homeownership here in the city of Falls Church. So what are the thoughts that you guys have around helping, helping folks buy affordable housing as opposed to just, just renting?
So I very much agree with you about all those points you made about wealth accumulation and, you know, the importance of sort of homeownership in the city. The scope of our work was actually limited to just affordable rental housing. So we didn't really spend that much time considering opportunities for homeownership in our research, in our work, sorry.
So do you, do you have any just kind of off-the-cuff thoughts about how we can help solve for that here in Falls Church?
Mo, I'm happy to offer some thoughts on the
Yeah, please.
So I think that the longer conversation around accessory homes includes a discussion about the many benefits that accessory homes or ADUs present to homeowners. One of those is the ability for homeowners to generate income from their property, which can allow opportunities to come up and, and exist for homeowners who may be buying into the market for the first time. If they're able to generate income from a second unit on the property, it might make the difference between them being able to purchase the home or not. On the other end of the spectrum, these units can be very meaningful for homeowners who may be homeowners who are aging in place or particularly susceptible to changes in the market, changes in taxes or home maintenance costs. If they're able to generate revenue from a second unit on their property, it could help them achieve more housing stability and perhaps prevent displacement, allow people to age in place. So it can be a very meaningful tool from a homeownership standpoint. And there are, there is much more that can be discussed around the benefits of accessory homes in that context.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. And I understand that, that you guys were limited to, to kind of the rental piece of this. And that's obviously, I think is easier to solve here in the context of the city of Falls Church. But now we'll put this out there for fellow council members and those that are listening, that, that wealth accumulation and wealth creation is, is one of the most surefire ways to help folks rise up out of the, the, the cycle of poverty and give folks, you know, an opportunity to build wealth. So if we can look for opportunities like that here in the city, I think that we should. Otherwise, thank you guys. And I will second what Ms. Hardy pointed out. We've been talking about affordable housing for quite some time. In my short three-year stint on city council and working with the Affordable Housing Policy Working Group, the two things we've been able to achieve, at least here in my three years, have been the cash and lieu and the ADU in perpetuity, but we could do a lot more. And I think that being able to kind of catalyze some of, of what you guys have put in place and come up with a very specific game plan on what we're going to do with the funds that are actually being raised, that are being taxed, that are, that are being put into the Affordable Housing Fund is what's going to be important. And I think that we need that specific, those specific tactics and that game plan to actually put some of this stuff into action, because we've been talking about it for quite a while. And I think it's time for us to act. So thank you all again.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lichtenhouse. Our next question, I think, comes from Mr. Davis. Do you have a question, sir?
Thank you so much for, thank you so much for putting this all together. I had a question about two things I didn't see in the report, which was changes to single-family zoning besides these accessory dwelling units. So duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, other missing middle zoning, as well as a standalone affordable housing project that we could use this Affordable Housing Trust Fund to pay for. So if we look towards what has created affordable housing in the past in Falls Church, the Fields itself was a standalone affordable housing project. And other places in Falls Church like Winter Hill were kind of incursions where we had a zone in the city on single-family zoning. So I was interested in why there's no mention of single-family zoning or a standalone affordable housing project, especially to get towards, you know, 30% AMI folks to have a place to rent in the city too, which affordable, standalone affordable housing building could do.
Mo, I'll take the question on zoning and I'll let you answer the question on projects.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I think that, Pete, the, the common thread here, I think, and I think what you're getting at is density. And whether we're talking about adding density through a zoning ordinance that allows for the development of accessory homes or ADUs, or there's changes to the zoning ordinance to allow for duplexes and just increased density in other ways, they're all different parts of a solution on increasing production, increasing density and increasing the supply of housing. Our scope was focused on recommendations that would allow for the production of ADUs. But certainly the same policy kind of indicators or guiders could be applied to other types of revisions that would get to the same goal. So I think that that's definitely an area for future discussion if there's nothing.
Would duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes and other kind of changes to single-family housing help the affordable housing crisis in Falls Church?
So, so here's the important thing to note. Increasing density will increase the supply of housing. And so from a macro level standpoint, increasing this level of supply can help contribute to housing affordability from a basic supply-demand standpoint. But again, absent additional interventions or incentives, the units will not be capital A affordable unless they are designated as such through some additional action. So there's both the, the macro level strategy around density and supply, which, which does have a meaningful impact. It, it truly is the first step in the, the strategy. And then the second aspect is if, if it's identified as a, is still being in need, then additional steps can be taken to designate the additional units as affordable.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
What about the standalone affordable housing?
So, so to answer the second part of your question, I, I will say it wasn't really in our scope specifically to, I guess, identify a new project for the city to, to invest in. I think that what, what we're presenting really are a number of broad policies the city can implement to actually target specific properties that already exist in the city and preserve them long-term. That was sort of the, the goal of the work that we were doing. I think that in providing some additional funding to the Affordable Housing Fund, and I think by, you know, potentially strengthening the ADU program, those are, you know, different strategies the city can implement to potentially incentivize a developer to consider any new development, whether it's, you know, a standalone or part of another, another project, include affordable housing in, in a new project.
Thank you.
All right. Our next question comes from Joshua Shakur.
You there?
Yep, right here. Thank you again, Moa, NHT and Federal City Council. So this report is pretty valuable, provides short-term, midterm and long-term goals to fight affordability in the city of Falls Church. I would say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the immediate goals seem to be these three. One, and you guys convinced me of cash and lieu. I was not a fan of cash and lieu, but I like, you know, the tone and the use of it in the report. So one would be to institute the voluntary mandatory policy, which also, if we do cash and lieu, it is dedicated to the Affordable Housing Fund. There is no, there would be earmarks for that use. I see the other one is being increased prioritizing ADUs in the new development and using that as the only voluntary concession instead of getting money for parks and schools, but prior to just ADUs. And the thirdly, and this seems like the most immediate, would be to utilize the Amazon REACH funds because the application process is in December, to try to preserve affordable units in the city that are expiring. I do notice that in the table provided in the report, that the first building that is having units expire is the rebuilding, and that's in 2022, and that's nine units. So I think we have the owner slash developer of the rebuilding on here. I don't want to call them out, but you know, this is a potential use of those Amazon funds and a potential roadmap for future negotiations with landlords. So again, it was great work. And also, I mean, again, please provide comments on what I just said, but if you could, you know, I have affordable housing, affordable housing policy, work my background, I work on it daily. If you could potentially explain maybe if we could bring in HCV holders, housing choice voucher holders and incentivize landlords in certain properties to accept them here in the city.
Yeah, so I guess the first, the first part of your comments, I will definitely, I will say that, you know, we provided 11 recommendations. And as we mentioned, even in, in, I guess, the formal part of our presentation, some of these clearly are not appropriate to be implemented right now, you know, increasing taxes, probably not the best idea. But we provided all of these, I guess, cumulatively as sort of a toolbox for the city to use and look at and, and figure out like what is most appropriate to implement at what time. And so, you know, I will say, you know, the city has already, you know, worked with a consultant to figure out this cash and lieu program. I think that that is a really straightforward and simple step to implement that cash and lieu program. And I think that, you know, the, I want to say the hard work's already been done in that the, the process has already been laid out for the city and, you know, in continuing to work with that consultant to really fully implement that. And I think that that might be a first step then in, you know, maybe working on, you know, a few other recommendations provided in the memo. So I think that it really is up to the city. And I think that in a lot of the work that we do like this, you know, we really want to give the city's ownership of like, here are some recommendations, but it's up to you to, to implement them. And, and I think that the, the outcomes and the, the strength of the city's housing strategy really depend on the commitment that the city has at all different layers, whether it's the council or city staff or the housing commissions to really follow through and, and see that these are being implemented and that, you know, they're seeing change in the city. And I forget what your last question was, sorry.
I was wondering if you, if you think there's any way we can incentivize the acceptance of HCV in the city with market rate developers? And maybe even explain vouchers to people on this call.
Yeah, so I think, I think in terms of, of housing choice vouchers, I think that one, so we, we didn't really consider them specifically in, in the memo, so they're not really a part of the recommendations. But I will say just off the top of my head, I am aware of, there are a couple of cities, I think in Texas, that have a program where either a nonprofit or the city itself rents out units from a, a developer and maybe covers that market price. And then they sort of carry the burden and they then sort of sublease the, the unit out to the housing choice voucher holder. So that's one thing that we have seen in a couple of jurisdictions that they've sort of, sort of piloted that program. So that could be one option the city could consider that we haven't included the memo, but you know, could still also consider if the, the city is sort of seeing this real death in, in market rate developers that are, that are not accepting housing choice voucher owners. Sorry, holders.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that, Moa, I think those are the right examples. So the master leasing program that she's talking about, it exists both in Houston and Dallas. So you're right, Moa, they're both, both in Texas. And they exist in, I'll say pilot form, but the intention is with neither of them is really to increase, to, to grow sort of beyond what it is. It's just sort of to prove a concept. And so in, I think it's in Dallas, there's a nonprofit that leases units from a landlord and then they in turn sublease to people with housing choice vouchers and they manage that entire process. And then in Houston, the housing authority has a separate arm that is doing this on their behalf. And it is a way to show landlords, look, housing choice vouchers aren't scary. The people who want to rent your units with these vouchers, they're not scary either. And to show that this can work. So it's sort of in the immediate provides housing opportunities and provides units to low-income renters with housing choice vouchers. And then longer-term, hopefully makes a point that, look, this is easy and there's no reason to be nervous about it. And so you as landlords across these two cities, because as those are the only two that we know about, should go ahead and accept housing choice vouchers, even absent this nonprofit or the housing authority sort of serving as that middleman and doing the master lease program.
And to explain to everyone on the call, a housing choice voucher basically is a voucher for a person of lower income that they can take to a building or a develop or a property and HUD will cover the rent up to 30% of their income. And a lot of times they can go and be portable from one community to another. And as we get in a relationship with Fairfax County, maybe this could be an option where we work with Fairfax County, utilize housing choice voucher program there.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next question comes from Jordan Hicks.
Thank you. And let me join the course of folks thanking you for the presentation and the very thorough report, a lot of helpful information there. So a couple of quick questions. One on, on ADUs, ADUs and new developments in particular, that is a priority area for the housing commission. Focus on that and focus on expanding the number. We've previously been getting around 6% of units in new developments that would be affordable. We would like to see that number go up and be, you know, prioritized either, either from a mandatory program or for, through voluntary concessions. Do you have, or have you looked at sort of what would be, what's a, what's a realistic or what's a good target to be shooting for above 6%? What's realistic? What's, you know, what is, have you seen in neighboring jurisdictions?
Yeah, so I think in neighboring jurisdictions, that number really varies. I think that some jurisdictions, and I don't have the, the report right in front of me, but some of them also similarly do have 6% as the, the onsite requirement for ADUs. I think it's Arlington County, which, and that program sort of differs slightly, but they have, I guess, depending on where the developer builds the ADUs, they have different levels. So if it's onsite, if it's offsite nearby, or if it's offsite just like in the, in the county, they then require the developer to provide a larger number of, a larger percentage of, of ADUs as part of that, part of that program. I would say we didn't really, we did, we did briefly consider sort of like whether the city should actually increase that number. And, you know, we saw in the actual formal program guidelines that it does allow for, I think, the city to have a percentage, I think, up to 12%. And then that then allows a developer to request or receive up to 20% of additional height and density. But I think that in sort of focusing and narrowing down the scope of, of the ADU program, we thought that, I think, the most important step was to actually increase the, or increase the, the, I guess, the, I think, what, I guess, the, the usage of the, the program and the, the participation of the program by making it sort of this voluntary mandatory. I think that one thing that the city could do is, you know, implement this as a voluntary mandatory program and see if developers are providing cash and lieu or creating the units. And maybe potentially use that as a gauge to see, okay, if we're getting a lot of developers providing units, then maybe if we increase that percentage to seven or eight percent, you know, would that change? And sort of have that, that conversation and engagement with the developers to see if, once this is a voluntary mandatory program, if their perceptions of what is a reasonable percentage of ADUs might, might change.
Okay, thank you. And then second question quickly is with respect to the fields. Appreciate that, you know, your report lays out that it's, it's, we have a little time there, but something to think about, you know, I like the, the creative solution that's in there about potentially using zoning to, to offer incentives to a developer to, to come up with a way to preserve those 96 existing units as part of maybe a larger development. You know, I, I saw on the report a recommendation of potentially allowing up to like a six-story apartment building on, on the side of the fields. Do you have a sense of, you know, how, how many units that would be on that, you know, four-point-whatever-acre site? Or, you know, sort of trying to help us gauge, you know, what's the likelihood of us being able to get 96 units into a, a development like that?
I will say I, with a six-unit, a six-story unit, I honestly don't know. I think that right now the field is, is 96 units and it's three stories in spread, I think, between three or four buildings. So I, I think obviously by increasing the density, it would still be possible to provide 96 affordable units if that was the requirement. I am not a developer, so I, I'm also not aware of how the math would work out in terms of increasing the, the density and, and how many units in total that would provide versus the, the affordable units. But I think that that is something that I guess the city can, I guess the city would have to consider.
And I think, yes, I think two points here, you know, I've heard, you know, excuse me, it just got dark. I heard, you know, both from you, Jordan, and a couple other times, you know, the sentiment which we for sure made in our report, that, look, you, there is some time left on the field and that's, that's great news. What we don't want is for the main takeaway to be like, okay, now we can sit back and relax and wait until that expiration date is closer. There is still a considerable amount of work that we hope the city will engage in, in these intramiers, like what Moa made out, excuse me, outlined and like what's in the report, some of which is what you're describing now, Jordan, which is really understanding what is the full density capacity for this, this office building, this site and this plot? And what would this look like? So that the city, when the expiration date is clear, is sooner, will be prepared and well-equipped to go to Sun America, go to Kettler and go to Wesley, assuming they're all still the owners, and say, look, this is the development potential on this site. We're willing to negotiate with you to help you get there as long as you're preserving these units. But the main takeaway is I don't think that that's a known quantity right now from the city. So it would be impossible to negotiate with Kettler, Sun America and Wesley, the current owners, without understanding what that development capacity could be.
Right, okay. Thank you.
All right. Our next question comes from Rob Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm with the Plenary Commission. Thank you all very much for, for all these materials. The questions, my questions on the fields have been, were just answered. So just a, a very quick comment and one question. You've given us real specific and tangible tasks here. And I think that I, I mean, I agree with, with council, we have to turn this into action. It's going to cost money. And so your recommendation number eight, we haven't really talked about it, but I think it's really important that we make sure that we're continuing to educate folks. This isn't just one-off reports, one-off meetings that just are kind of atomized, but we make this part and parcel of how we talk about the future of the city and everything you said about making this an explicit priority. We, we say it, but we really have to do a lot more education. So it's just my quick comment. For the question, you talked a lot about incentives and you talked about density bonuses, you talked about height, height bonuses, things like that. In your work and in a place like Falls Church, you think that parking reductions would go, would, would be appropriate incentives for developers, given the cost of parking, especially underground, obviously parking is fraught. We are all living through this right now. But again, if we're trying to make this an explicit priority, have you seen that that has worked elsewhere and could it work here?
Laura, Maura, do you want to jump in? I personally have not done any research or, or sort of looked into parking requirements and how that might incentivize any affordability or preservation of, of existing properties.
Rob, I'm happy to, to speak to that a little bit. I have, I am familiar with parking being a very effective tool and kind of flexibility around parking being a very effective tool in incentivizing affordable housing to be built. The trade-off is the developer spends less money building expensive parking and spends that money subsidizing units that are then affordable. So I think parking is a really interesting area to investigate. I think that there are certainly others, and I think that it, again, it depends on which levers the, the city is kind of willing to pull among others. But I think that that's a really good example of an incentive that has proven to be effective.
Thanks, Maura. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Our next speaker or next question comes from Deborah Roth. Deborah?
Yes, hi. Also, I have to say that was a very informative presentation and I really appreciate it. Two things really struck me. One, there's only so much density that we can do in the city, but obviously that's something that we could address and you came up with some very good ideas. But with that in mind, politically, you're talking to people who are very dedicated to this, but the city as a whole is not that way. And they fear some areas that I respect. My background is communications marketing and I find that affordable housing is a tough sell. Do you have any programs, like when you mentioned communications about this, that have been successful and have proven that, for example, real estate values do not go down when affordable housing is built?
So I think that, I mean, I think in the last, like, I want to say year, 18 months, I personally, I know I'm, I'm also a consumer, a lot of affordable housing news and media. But I think just generally the conversation around affordable housing at the national and, you know, a lot of local levels has really shifted to talk more openly and more positively, I think, about affordable housing, the needs that residents have and the need that cities need to have affordable housing to, to, to meet the needs of these residents. So I think that, you know, seeing that shift in the broader conversation has been really encouraging. I think that in the, in the actual memo, we give a couple of examples of campaigns that have done work similar that the city could do in terms of actually sort of shifting that narrative and really giving current residents sort of an eye into what it's like to need and live in affordable housing and the difference that makes people's lives. There's an example in Portland, the, I think it's the 11 by 13 campaign, where they had a number of properties they wanted to save. And so they sort of worked through a, a citywide campaign to, I guess, broadcast that they were going to do this work and this is the difference that they were going to make when they did this. I know the National Housing Trust, we ourselves, a couple of years ago, were working on a campaign where we were sort of uplifting the voices of residents. And so we were taking resident videos, interviewing residents and, and sort of sharing them with the public through, you know, news media, through, you know, meeting with congressional staffers and members at the federal level to sort of show them that these are real people and a lot of them have real struggles that many of us will go through. And it's not a unique experience to go through and to need affordable housing. This happens to a lot of people and, and we who are in a slightly more privileged position, you know, should be doing more to, to help them. So I think that these are just two examples that we have given in the memo. And there are, I'm sure in many other cities, countless examples of, of how, how the cities are working to sort of shift this narrative and to really educate and show residents that there is a need for affordable housing and it's not going to be the worst thing in the world.
Yeah, I know that people support it philosophically, but what do you say to people that think their real estate values are going to fall? Do you have any studies on that? If you don't, that's okay. Maybe you can check.
I was, I was gonna say, I don't, I don't have any off the top of- I was I was gonna say, I don't, I don't have any off the top of my head. But I feel like somewhere in my mind, I'm thinking that I did read somewhere that 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 idea that that housing prices will drop is actually false. But I mean, I can follow up with you about that. But nothing off the top of my head.
Moha, the National Association of Realtors has put together a list of resources on this. Deborah, I can drop that into the chat here for you to take a look at. But it does, it does support what Moha is saying about the values not decreasing as a result of nearby affordable housing.
Terrific. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Laura.
All right, our next speaker is Corey Firestone Weiss. Corey?
Hi. Hi, I'm Corey Weiss with the Planning Commission. Thank you so much for this really informative presentation and report. My question is as much and actually really more for city staff and perhaps city council than for you. This is a tremendous report with a lot to chew on, and I think some pretty clear action items. I think it's clear that we need to have an all hands on deck scramble to go after that Amazon money ASAP. But then my question is, what comes next? How do we turn this report into action? What is the process to evaluating the recommendations, determining how we'll go after them, and then developing a process to start implementing some of these policies and engaging the community?
Thanks. Sorry, was that a question for?
That was a question, actually. That was a question for our housing staff and our planning staff. And while I put them on the spot unexpectedly, I'll just offer that, you know, we can take some time to hear on this. But I think there's a lot of immediate actions. And I know several of us on the Planning Commission have asked for a work plan to look at both housing affordability as well as housing diversity more broadly. So we look forward to continuing to engage on this. And we do want to see it turn into action.
Got it. Well, I'll tell you what, I'm going to give staff a few minutes to think that over and maybe go on to some other questions. And when we wrap up, we'll, we'll kind of hit on the next step steps aspect of this. So let me go ahead and move on to the next questions. Mr. Snyder, do you have a question?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
So thanks. I much appreciate the presentation and all the questions and comments from all the participants this evening. It's very useful to, first of all, have this research done to provide options and then to hear folks react to them and to begin to provide some suggestions about moving forward. I really have three that occurred to me. First is the focus on the Amazon grant, I think, in view of the the time being so short, it seems to me that ought to be a high priority for us. Secondly, looking at special exception ordinance to see if we can't get additional ADUs in the projects that are now before us in one form or another. And third, exploring what we can do more with Fairfax County and the other contractors with Fairfax County. I also appreciate the sensitivity of the presenters on tax issues right now, considering where we are in the pandemic and considering the many demands on our budget that we're going to be having over the next year or so, certainly in the short term, and also the sensitivity on opening up the zoning ordinance. But I don't, I don't particularly rule out anything at this point. But I do think a narrowed focus on a few things that we should get going on now would be most helpful. I guess my first role in city government really was on the board and then president of the Falls Church Housing Corporation. So I have a long term commitment to doing what we can do in the context of our other demands for performance of fundamental city functions. I look forward to continuing to work on this issue and provide a couple suggestions about priorities for moving on in the immediate future. Again, thanks so much for the work of the the people who got this started, our staff, the folks who were presented tonight, and all the questions and thoughts from members of the community. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think four things. One, Amazon's deadline is the end of December. Is that what I heard? So we've got 73 days between now and December 31. Would be helpful, I think, for those of us on council who'll be tracking this to know as soon as possible, maybe Wednesday's mayor's planning meeting with the manager, if, you know, we've got staff resources to do whatever it is we need to do to get the Amazon money applied for. Second, I've read, and I'm pretty sure I don't understand, and you don't have time to educate me, what what is something that is voluntary mandatory or mandatory voluntary or whatever? I think what I want to know from the city man, from the city attorney, is, is there anything that prevents me from asking the next three developers who come with proposals for an ADU mix that is three times what we have typically asked for? So six to 18 or 20. We talked about this at some point in the past. And I don't know, somehow I thought that there was a legal thicket here. Again, I don't, I don't want to get us bogged down in the details tonight. But before the EDC, the Economic Development County meets on Friday, and we are going to hear from a couple of developers who have projects they'd like to bring us. And there's another one wings. I would like to know if it's legally okay to at least bring that 20% threshold up as an option. Understand that it requires us to make trade offs and other voluntary concessions. But still, I just like to know if I can do that without getting us in any trouble. Three, on the standalone building, a long term interest of mine and other folks in town, too. This is sort of a visual exercise. Could somebody who's good with drawing pictures, show me what a six story 96 unit building looks like in two locations? One, where the fields currently are now, and two, where the Virginia Village quads currently are now. I believe we went through, as it relates to the quads, an exercise in the small area plan for the center part of the city that did have a representation of a building of the sort that I described. Maybe we can pull that off the shelf and update it. But I think it'd be helpful for us in the community to see what that looked like, you know, a building that has the appropriate mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. What what amount of space does it take up? And what space does it leave for us to do other things, whether it's preserving the existing fields buildings, some of them at least, or, you know, perhaps creating space for open space at a location like Virginia Village, if we were able to give homes to the folks who live in the Virginia Village quads now? Would we in a in a higher rise building, would we be able to devote some of the land there to open space? And finally, fourth, funding. It's before my time on council, so I don't know the details. But my recollection is that we had a pretty substantial amount of money in the Affordable Housing Fund about 10 years ago. And for reasons that related to the economic recession and political choices, that money was moved into, I suppose, the city unassigned fund balance, to the tune of about $2 million, I think. I would like for the CFO to give us a plan of attack for replenishing that $2 million, if that's the amount of money that it was, in a responsible timeframe, in a way that recognizes that that money went into the unassigned fund balance and I don't believe was ever spent. And therefore, I'm going to argue that, you know, we have a sort of fiduciary opportunity and moral responsibility to try to bring some of that money back from the unassigned fund into the fund for affordable housing. We may not have an immediate use for it, but I think we've heard tonight there are enough opportunities for the use of that money that we need to take action to write what I think is a choice made 10 years ago that turned out to be a short sighted choice. So those are my four questions for answering, I suppose, starting on Wednesday and maybe through our meeting next Monday. Thanks for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. We have a question from the Vice Mayor via telephone.
Could I actually quickly, could I just quickly jump in to respond to to Mr. Duncan, if that's okay?
Sure.
Sure. So just on, just wanted to quickly mention two things in relation to, I guess, two of your four comments. So the first one was, I obviously don't want to take away any sense of urgency. As someone who has worked on this project, it's really exciting to see that everyone on this call who has made any comments has really taken to heart this this deadline of of the Amazon funding, which which the city has to access until December 31st, this at the end of this year. I will note that there is a potential second round of funding that will be available for the city to access at the beginning of next year. So any uncommitted funds by, you know, January 1st, next year will be eligible for a second round of funding. And so Virginia Housing will be accepting proposals that will be, and that that proposal period would be would be open until June 15, 2021. So there is potentially a second round of funding that the city could access if there is leftover money from this current round. So just wanted to to let everyone know that it is mentioned in the memo. But just wanted to make sure everyone, everyone was aware of that. And then the second part about the voluntary mandatory program, I, again, will not go into too much detail about how that program works. A lot of that is laid out in the memo in the recommendation. And we did our due diligence to ensure that sort of the aspects of the program were consistent with what would be allowed in the city of Falls Church. And we sort of outlined that a number of the neighboring jurisdictions have different legal frameworks. And, you know, for example, Arlington County, they have a mandatory program. But they are the only jurisdiction that is allowed to have a mandatory program. And that is allowed by the Commonwealth of Virginia State Legislature. So, you know, all the other jurisdictions, all the counties and cities in in Virginia don't have that same power that Arlington does. But there is some ability to strengthen the program if a developer meets certain requirements. And those those requirements of the voluntary aspect, and once they are met, then there is a mandatory ADU requirement.
All right. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Mayor Charter. I appreciate this. I've been listening and I haven't been able to see anything. But I have looked through all of your materials and really appreciate the work that you put into this report. It is really thorough. And it seems as if we've been for a long time talking about lots of different things, and you put it all in one place in a way that is understandable. So I really appreciate that. I appreciate the the detail in your report on how to preserve the fields and save it and the steps that we can take, because that was another thing that I feel like we just have not had clear direction on what what do we need to do. So thank you for that. I'll add my voice to the course of people saying, let's take advantage of these Amazon funds by December 31. I think that should be our main focus for the next, I think, Mr. Duncan said, 78 days, maybe less than 78 days. And then two, two questions about it. And that is on page 19 of the report. And someone referred to the the rebuilding that the control period on the affordable housing there was ending. And I'm just wondering if those dates are wrong, because it says it's a 20 year control period and it will expire in 2022. But that building didn't open in 2002. So I'm wondering if it's either a shorter control period or a longer affordability time available. So that's just one question. If someone could get back to me on that one. And then I didn't see in here any plan to save existing single family homes that are affordable. It seems like we have a lot of homes in the city of Falls Church, that if there was a program within the city to save a smaller house that could be purchased, and I know you said you only looked at rentals, but a house that could be purchased so that families could purchase that house. Is there a way that we can start to look at that as well? And maybe I direct that one to staff. But I do feel like there's a lot of smaller homes that are being purchased by developers and made into larger homes. And if we had a plan and an intention to incentivize home sellers to sell through this program so that we could keep them affordable, I think that would be also a good thing for us to look at in the future. Thanks a lot.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Connolly. Are there other questions or comments from those on the phone call right now? If not, I looks like we've got one. Mr. Salzberg got back on the line. Looks like maybe he dropped off for a moment. Also, Ms. Hardy has a comment. So let's go to Ed and then Ms. Hardy. And then we should wrap this up pretty soon. We do have multiple other items, including a closed session tonight. So go ahead, Ed.
Great, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And I'll try to be quick about that. Just a lot of things come to mind. I appreciate the report. You know, one is that it always comes down to values. And, you know, I certainly am willing to pay more for affordable housing. But there's also other contributing priorities, the schools, services, and a lot of things. So it's really hard to get the priorities sort of in line. And but affordable housing from an economic development standpoint, and I'm on the EDA, really is really important issue for the city for a lot of reasons. First of all, affordable housing doesn't mean low income housing. It means police, it means school teachers, it means a lot of the front line workers that are protecting us from viruses like COVID. And we want those people to be closer in so that they don't have to travel so far to get to us. I mean, they're after all, dedicating their lives to protecting the community. So I think I and many in most of the community really supports, you know, supports that. But but it's, it's, it's hard to get that done in a city of 15,000 people and two square miles. I just wanted to see what the what the researchers think about this as being much more of a regional issue and maybe maybe our contribution to more of a central fund that could be managed by Arlington or Fairfax. And I know you talk about coordination with Fairfax County. But but can we get more bang for our buck here if we put the money into more of a regional approach to this than just the city? I just don't see that there's an economy of scale here. Each buy down of a unit costs almost one cent on the on the taxes here in Falls Church, whereas a buy down on the unit in Arlington is way, way less than that. The other point I want to make is that for the for the fields, which I think we want to try to preserve in some way, if that were redeveloped, 96 units in a redevelopment would be on, if we if we just look at 6% being sort of the target for for affordable units, that would be over 1,800 units, which is, which is a really huge development. And so I just want to see, just sort of see whether that's the direction that the researchers are thinking about or not. So I have two questions, one about the regional approach. And the second is, is there, is there, is there a solution for the fields, other than maybe the city stepping in and finding somewhere just to buy the property and preserve the 96 units? Because redevelopment seems like a huge, it seems like unlikely to me that we're going to preserve 96 units.
Sure. So I'll start with your first question. So I'm just getting a bit of feedback as well from someone. If you're welcome. Thank you. So I think to begin with the the partnership with other counties and, you know, where the city might get more bang for its buck. I I guess, I think that it's really important, and I think we make note of this in in the memo as well, that obviously, yes, it is a regional problem. It's also a national problem that there is a affordable housing crisis. But I don't think that that should really excuse any jurisdiction, any city, any county, from maybe not, you know, investing in affordable housing as much as they can and to meet the needs of their city. And I think that Falls Church, just like Arlington or Fairfax County is no exception. I think that definitely there is opportunity for partnership. You know, I think that the city already has this agreement with Arlington County, it's soon going to shift its cooperative partnership agreement to Fairfax County. I think that, you know, both should be should be relationships that are valued and explored. And if there is an opportunity for the city to collaborate by providing funds, I think that that should definitely be pursued. But there are also like a number of other sort of questions that come up when you consider something like that, like who gets priority to live in those buildings, you know, who sort of manages that property, all these other sort of questions that come up when you're doing these cross jurisdictional partnerships. I think that, you know, we definitely did consider and recognize that the city is, you know, 2.2 square miles. There is only so much new development, only so much, you know, currently open land that can be developed. And so I think that, you know, we really have focused on our recommendations on preserving the existing affordable housing stock, so that there is that, you know, I guess, minimum level of affordability that, you know, and in, you know, X number of units that the city is providing for residents so that they have a place to stay. I think focusing specifically on the fields in our recommendation and our, you know, potential preservation strategy, we don't actually specifically say that the city should ask for ask for 6% affordable units as part of the redevelopment of the property. In the potential amendment to the zoning code, what we're asking for would be essentially a net no loss to the existing affordable units. And this sort of an amendment would actually apply to all residential multifamily zoning in the city that already has existing affordable housing on it. So I know it's not just the field. I think there are three or four other sites that are zoned as residential multifamily that do have affordable housing on them, and this would apply to them. So essentially, all it means is that if a developer was, an owner was to redevelop that site, that they could do that and they could increase height and density, but it would have to mean that the existing number of units, so for the fields, that would be 96, there would have to be 96 units on that property. Whether the city, through any sort of negotiation, asks for more units is up to the city and the owner at that time. But this, I guess, language in the zoning code would stipulate that at least that minimum number, whether it's 96 on the fields or, you know, another property that maybe only has 25, that requirement would have to be there.
Can I just ask a follow-up on that one? Can you, is it actually affordable to redevelop a property and have 96 units on it on the same-sized property? Will a developer come in and do that?
I guess, as I said earlier, as a developer, I'm not really sure. But I think that that is sort of a feasibility, something that the city can consider when they're also thinking about what that future zoning of that site can look like. And if there is capacity to offer increased density, to what extent that they could offer that to a developer, that would then allow a developer to make that redevelopment feasible.
And I'll add, you know, the property that we were tasked with looking at specifically is the field, so I can't speak to the other properties, but certainly the fields, we know this to be true, and we heard it over and over during our engagement throughout this process, that the plot on which the field sits is not being used to its highest potential, both in terms of sort of income generation for the owner, but more importantly and relevant to this conversation in terms of density. And so certainly, when thinking about the fields, there is room for increased density well beyond the 96 units that sit there. And again, those 96 units, we're not suggesting that that be 6% of the total number of units on the site, but something above 96, it could certainly tolerate that.
All right, a last question, I think, is coming this evening from Ms. Hardy. Letty?
Great, thank you. I did want to address, I think, a couple of comments back. One of the comments was about how do we kind of sell this to the community, that affordable housing is a good thing? And so I always true back to our values as a community. I think we talk about how we want to be a community for all people, whether you are just starting out, coming back from college, whether you're trying to age in place. I think the vice mayor had a comment around how do we preserve existing single-family homes? And I think accessory dwelling units, I think, or accessory living units, whatever we call them, has an element in there. I think there's some early data coming out of the West Coast that shows that when people are allowed to put granny flats on site, it allows them to actually stay in their home. So I think that's something for us to consider. So not only just affordable housing, but I think what we've been calling in the region "missing middle housing" and having more diverse housing options can certainly help with, I think, housing that complete generation that we talk about. And then the last point is, besides values, is really around social justice and racial justice. So I think Falls Church was definitely part of the national reawakening this summer. And I've heard from so many in the community, you know, besides showing up for the Black Lives Matter marches and having yard signs and resolutions, everyone is hungry to do more. And I think housing is one of the most tangible ways that we can actually locally help with social justice by actually providing housing for all. And so I want our colleagues, my colleagues really has the closing thought, is that this is kind of a way for us to actually do something about the injustice that we saw across the country this summer.
All right, thank you. So let me ask, I clearly, I think all of us on this call want to move words into action, and I think this conversation tonight has been very helpful in heading in that direction. But I thought I would go ahead and ask Mr. Shields, as far as staff, what do you see next steps? And can you just lay out kind of, obviously, Amazon, I think, is a part of it, but can you give us some ideas on next steps as far as you're concerned? Or if you need additional time? We certainly understand that as well.
Well, I think we certainly will carry on this work with the city council and with all of our boards and commissions. We are right now in the process of doing negotiations with developers on the cash-and-lou model that we have. And, you know, it's important to understand with that model, there are kind of two inflection points on how that's used for each project. And for each project, those will be probably debated and negotiated. And that's the way we measure the delta between market and affordable units and the discount rate that's used. That's going to be an argument every time we use that model. So it will continue to be a living model with the development community. But so that's, I think that's important work that we've advanced. I think one other big area of work that we've set the foundation for, which is the recommendation that's in this report for closer cooperation with Fairfax County. And that's been discussed earlier tonight, so I won't repeat it, but I think that is an area where using those partnerships is how we can overcome the diseconomies of scale that we have. And just by way of sort of comparison, even if we were making contributions to the Affordable Housing Fund at the level of Fairfax County or of Arlington County, it doesn't generate enough money to do the types of housing projects or preservation projects that they're conducting in those jurisdictions. It's, you know, it's just a scale issue. And so I think partnerships are key for us. And I think there's, we've created greater opportunities for that. And I think that's going to be one area, I think, of fruitful work over the, you know, coming weeks or months. But I'd love for other members of staff to jump in if they have some other ideas on immediate things that we can do and carry this discussion forward.
I would say also, to the extent that it may not be appropriate tonight, but to revisit this at a time certain, so it doesn't just sort of fall into a black hole, but the idea that we'll revisit what we've heard tonight after staff's had some further time for contemplation and come up with some more concrete proposals and way to implement the discussion we've heard tonight, and also get further information about Amazon and kind of how that's working along. But I think having a date certain that we can reconvene on these issues is important to keep momentum up.
And so we will circle back to get this on the schedules. I do think that you're exactly right of having dates and milestones is the way that we hold ourselves collectively accountable for making progress here.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Shields. We look forward to hearing more from you and from staff and to continuing the momentum from tonight's meeting, but most particularly for the folks who put together this report and memorandum, we want to thank you for the incredible work you've done and the ideas you brought forth and just so many creative things that we can, as a city, be doing to do better as a community, to implement our values and to work to solve for this important issue. So we want to thank you all so much. And for our boards and commission members, thank you for joining us tonight and the good work that you all do on so many different issues. So with that, I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute recess, let our folks who want to drop off, drop off the call, and then reconvene on the other issues on the agenda. So thank you all for joining us, and let's take a five-minute recess if we could, reconvene at 9:35.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate you guys making the time tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you all, you too. Good night.
Thank you.
Mayor, yes, you're good for FCC TV feed.
All right, well, welcome back, everyone. We have reconvened. We do have a few more items, and then we are going to close session. So we do have a lot left ahead on our agenda. Let's go ahead and move to the next item. Mr. Shields, is this for you or Ms. Bawa?
Ms. Bawa will give the report on both of these items, and we'll be very brief on the first quarter financial report, and then just a high-level overview of the budget request for amendment number two. And I will just note that the Budget and Finance Committee reviewed both of these in detail on Friday morning last week. Ms. Bawa?
Good evening, Mayor Charter, members of the council. The first quarter revenues for the city's general fund from July 1st to September 30th are overall, the budget, they're up by 3.2%. The economic situation is still very fluid due to the COVID pandemic, and key revenue indicators are showing mixed results. The personal property tax assessments are pretty close to last year's actuals. The sales tax revenues remain strong with almost 10% year-over-year growth with increased grocery and internet sales. Meals taxes revenue, on the other hand, are about 7% below budget for the first quarter and approximately 28% lower than the first quarter of last fiscal year. Charges for services are about 14% below budget and about 19% below first quarter of last year due to drop in recreation program fees and motor pool fees. And fine and forfeitures are approximately 60% below last year's due to a drop in parking fines, court fines, and light cameras. Again, these results are inconclusive, mostly for first two or three months because of the lag in data that we get, and we will continue to monitor these. Staff will present, provide preliminary revenue forecast for the next year's budget development in November, December, to the joint school board and city council meeting. With that, I'll wrap up my notes, and if you have any questions, happy to answer.
All right, well, thank you much. Let's see if we have any questions. Does anyone on council have any questions or comments for Ms. Bawa? All right, well, that was pretty quick. Nice work.
Mayor, I just have one comment.
Yes, Vice Mayor Connolly and Letty Hardy, so I spoke too soon. So let's go with Vice Mayor Connolly, then Ms. Hardy.
As Mr. Shields mentioned, we did look into this at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting last week, and I appreciate Ms. Bawa's preparation of the report and quick delivery. And the one takeaway that I just want to share with everyone is that we all need to go out and eat more in the City of Falls Church. So shop locally, eat locally, and let's bring that Meals Tax up to where it needs to be.
I can do on the eating part, so.
That's what I thought, too.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
I was going to bring up Meals Tax as well. So I know that we had budgeted 75% of kind of our pre-COVID numbers, and we're seeing kind of 68 to 70. So recognizing that Q1 is probably going to be the peak of outdoor dining, which is probably where most of that revenue is coming from currently, and it's only going to get worse from here out while the weather gets cold, do we think we need to do any reforecasting for FY '21 or adjust the budget in any way?
Councilmember Hardy, we're going to see another couple of months, and as part of the second quarter, I would like to bring any revised projections. That'll also be in preparation prior to the city manager's proposed budget, that would be in March. So it would be, I would like to see at least a good five to six months of data before we adjust downwards. I do get the point, these are cyclical, but when we parse out the budget on the quarter-to-quarter basis, we keep those trends in mind, and the budget amount are not exactly one-fourth for every quarter. So we do keep that cyclical nature in mind, and I'd like to see two quarters before making any adjustments, because overall, the sales taxes are holding, are offsetting our negatives as of now, but we remain to be seen how we'll do as we get through another couple of months.
Got it. We'll bundle up and keep eating local.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, let's move on to the next item. And before you get started on it, the vice mayor and myself are likely to be reading a quick statement, and I want to start with mine. I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-22 and amendment to the FY 2021 budget. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and I am therefore a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by this matter. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. Vice Mayor Connolly, is there something you wanted to say?
There is, Mayor, and I make this statement. Can I, can you hold on a second and come back to me? I have to find the statement.
All right, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder, I have a statement to make.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Although it's not required, I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-22 and amendment to the 2021 budget. My independent adult daughter is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and therefore is a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by the city's budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I'm ready now.
You ready?
I make the following statement before city council's discussion of TO 20-22 and amendment to the FY 2021 budget. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and therefore a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters. I can participate in them fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right, thank you all very much. Let's move on to the presentation. Ms. Bawa?
Good evening, Mayor Charter, again. So we have for you the second budget amendment for the current fiscal year, which requests appropriation of CARES funding totaling $547,000 for emergency assistance for residents, business assistance, and city technology enhancements. With that brings us a total appropriation so far by council for $1.83 million. In addition, we are requesting a transfer of $453,000 to the Falls Church Public Schools. The CARES Act funds that the Commonwealth is awarding the schools directly to respond to the impacts of the COVID pandemic. Additionally, the ordinance includes appropriation of $6.5 million in an initial payment from the developers of the West Falls Church project to the capital reserve. This is just the assignment of the funds to the capital reserve. And the next action that I'd like to call out is the last, in the last fiscal year, the permit fees came in $872,000 over budget. Of the staff is requesting appropriation of $90,000 for contracting inspection services expenditures this fiscal year and commit the remaining amount of $782,000 to the building permit fee reserve to address major multi-year capital projects. We are also requesting carryforward of the unspent funds for business district improvements in fiscal year 2020, remaining balance was $22,000. Additionally, $213,000 carryforward to implement improvements to the city's emergency communication system for the Next Gen 911 initiative in coordination partnership with Arlington County. We are also requesting carryforward of $15,000 in unspent sidewalk funds to complete the sidewalk project at Marshall Oak Seaton intersection. And finally, we are requesting $150,000 in underspending to pay for the city's portion of the George Mason High School practice field lights, which were initially planned to be paid using the debt proceeds. And this ordinance also includes a reprogramming of unspent funds in the capital improvement program from Roosevelt Sidewalk, Roosevelt Street Sidewalk and Bike Share Phase 1 projects. Both are remaining projects, funds of completed projects for South Washington multimodal Plaza project construction contingencies. And that concludes my report. Happy to address any questions you may have.
All right, well, let's see what questions we have. Any questions or comments? Indeed, we have some. Ms. Hardy?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I did have a question about the FY '20 underspending. If I remember correctly, we had, is it $900,000, Kieran?
Yes, $904, yes.
And so what's being proposed in this budget amendment is $213,000 for Next Gen 911, which I know we're going to talk about at the end of the meeting, and then $150,000 for lights at the George Mason Practice Field?
That's correct, leaving the unassigned general fund balance of $541.
Got it. And I think in the staff report, I read the rationale to use cash to pay for the lights versus debt finances just to take out less debt, is that correct?
That's correct. And we will be bringing you the bond resolution next Monday. And as discussed at the last work session, we're not proposing any issuance of general fund debt.
Got it. Was the, I guess, the $150,000 for lights part of the $120 million, I guess, voter referendum that voters approved as part of the new high school?
So the school's share of $150,000 is part of that 120, but the city's share was not part of that 120.
Okay.
That's in our CIP, and that we were proposing to debt finance.
So I know that we talked about this budget and finance, but... but I guess I'm still stuck on the inconsistency of not debt financing things like the Fellows Project, knowing that we're not far enough along with that, not doing this for the lights and using cash. But yet we are going to be talking about twelve million dollars of debt for the stormwater projects. And so I think that's where I'm still kind of stuck on as a principle of trying to not increase our debt capacity, our debt load, but yet using cash for this. So I guess I would question whether any of the money in the nine hundred thousand underspending could be available to fund stormwater projects and for us to consider that in the next budget amendment.
This leaves a balance of five hundred, roughly five hundred and forty thousand, and it is council discretion to reprogram general fund savings to stormwater if choose if council chooses not to issue stormwater debt. The issuance amount for stormwater at this moment is five hundred thousand that we are requesting in the current fiscal year, as was discussed at the last work session. So that is for the design of the programs. And I guess we'll be discussing this in further details next Monday. And the amount for the construction phase of those projects is going to be brought forward in the future years for debt issuance.
Got it, thank you. It's more discussion to come.
All right, Mr. Lipton House?
Yep, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Kieran, I'm following on to that stormwater comment that Letty made. Do we have the ability to reprogram those funds to service debt? Not just a cash outlay for stormwater? Maybe that's a Carol question, but can we legally use that money to service debt for stormwater projects? Or does it have to be spent as a full investment?
I I I mean, this is really a Carol question, but general fund money is discretionary. You can choose to use it in any way. If the transfer was coming from stormwater, then of course, you know, a lot of alerts would go on. But I can have a legal opinion for you on that from Carol. Get back to you.
I think that would be helpful, simply because kind of where I've landed on on stormwater is to only bite off as much as we can chew. And if we have got underspending that could be used to finance debt, that allows us to and that's and the decision is to move forward on more than just one project that would give us the ability to to effectively leverage up to service that debt with the cash as opposed to just investing it. And because we have the ability to borrow at such low rates, it probably seems like a much better solution than just investing the cash itself, if that is the direction that we go. So if we could have an answer to that by the time we've got to discuss next week, that would be helpful. Because, again, I'm not keen on raising any taxes at this point or stormwater fees to address any projects. And would like to know what we could manage and what we could take on with the money that we have, including this money.
Okay, we'll do.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments? Mr. Duncan?
I just want to second and third those questions by Mr. Lipton House and Ms. Hardy. Can you also, next Monday, tell us what what the debt service? Remind us what the debt service is on the twelve million over twenty years? What is the annual debt service cost of that going to be if we went with the twelve million?
We'll include that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Ms. Bowa, we appreciate it. I know we'll be talking to you very soon. Why don't we move on to our next item, Mr. Shields, Next Generation nine one one?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is an item that we just wanted the council to be aware of this request. It is part of the budget item you just discussed a moment ago as a carry forward. But what we would be proposing is to move kind of in step with Arlington County and Alexandria to install in partnership with them the equipment.
Counsel, counsel reconvene in open session. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tarter, yep. All right, it's eleven eighteen. This is a certification upon a motion made by councilmember.
Duncan?
Seconded by councilmember.
Hardy?
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yes.
Snyder?
Look, Stan.
Tarter, yep. All right, is there anything else to discuss tonight?
Though I think, Mr. Snyder, you need to state the reason on the record for your abstention.
State my reason for the abstention is that I'm not in total agreement. Thank you.
All right, is there anything else to be said tonight?
Move to a turn.
Let's do it, all right. Everyone, have a great night, and we'll see you soon.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Thank you.